I am calling to order the Pottstown Council Committee at the whole meeting as of October 4th, 2017. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Infrastructure, councillor Colt.
Okay. I'll start with Parks and Rec. Summer's over, summer program went well. Splash Park has no major problems. All the treatments are ahead of schedule, regular attendees, renting pavilions, and all wear tests are good. The Pavilion in Riverfront Park's almost done. I'm not sure, I think it's even further now than it was when we had this meeting. And just some finishing things, lights, furnishings, et cetera. They received some grants from PICO and from Pottstown Health and Wellness, and so we don't have to add, put very much towards it. Pedestrian Bridge is, Health and Wellness and Bentley is putting towards a project. Cedarville has a solution which is adjusting pylons and the solid earth. The Natural Land Trust is, studies are going on, and they're studying lantern fly also, I guess it has to do with trees and the park. The, uh, he, um, he?
Place.
Huh?
Place.
Yeah, his department.
Right.
Yeah, license inspection, there you go. Uh, there's a convenience store closed at High and Charlotte. Um, we have our meet, we're still having our meet and greets, they're finishing up on that, and that did very well. Um, we're not going to be able to do that next year financially, we're not going to be able to do it. Uh, the property transfers are up, and there's good things going on the horizon for businesses. And, uh, there's new cuisine going in, it's Vietnamese, Oriental, high-end, that these investors are looking at in this business. Um, all these going into, where Weiss is used to be in Pottstown, and there's possibly a new fitness center in the old Giant, and possibly a bingo hall. And, uh, there's businesses that are buying up properties and fixing up them, hopefully bringing in new business, and that's all I have to say for them.
Very good. Okay, economic development and business liaison assistant manager Keller.
Good evening councillors, I have a few updates for you tonight. There's no update to the grants list because we're in a wall right now, where we're waiting for several announcements to come out from CBBG grant funds, DCNR and DCD grant funds, so there should be hopefully more good news on those in the next upcoming months. Just want to remind everyone again that the, there's going to be a closure on King Street for the Norfolk Southern Crossing replacement on October 20th through 23rd. So that will be a full closure on that, on those days, there is a rain date of October 30th, so we're coordinating with the local businesses there, police, I think we're going to go out and talk to them, make sure that they're aware, and we'll also send out letters. Also want to announce that we've launched, launched a new online job portal. So from now on, we will have, all of our job applications will be online, we'll no longer be accepting paper copies. So that'll help us to be more efficient when we're, when we're screening applicants, and hopefully it'll help the applicants experience a little bit more as well. It'll, it'll also allow us to more easily go back and pull old applications that weren't, that weren't filled previously. So if you've signed up for the notify me link for Borough Jobs, that will no longer be valid, so you have to sign up for a new notification link since this is a different job notification system, and you can find that on our human resources page, and there'll be, there'll be more news for, on that to come. The, the other thing is the School River Trail, the final paving was completed today, I believe. They did have to close down one lane yesterday, but, um, for now, they're, they're good to go, they just have some finishing touches to put in, put on. The inside guide rail has to go in yet on the trail side, and then the reflectors on top of the guide rail have to be re-spaced a little bit. Update on the walk bike project, that had started on September 15th. Sidewalk replacements took place last week on the north side of High Street in the area of the 1100 block, and then they'll be coming back next week to do the south side sidewalk replacements, also on the 1100 block. So more, more on that to come as well. And then another announcement to make, the Culbriukdale Preservation Trust has started a campaign for the station at Memorial Park. If you remember, they have a grant to build the, the station at Memorial Park. They've modified their plan a little bit, and what they're actually proposing is a partnership with the Borough Parks and Recreation to offer at no cost a space for the Parks and Recreation Department to host some of their events. There would also be bathroom facilities and kind of a flexible community space. So, um, they are looking for donations to make that happen. They, they have one grant lined up and several other donations in the work, in the works, but we're really trying to make the station at Memorial Park a centerpiece for regional recreation in, in the area, because we host a lot of big events there. Eventually, there's going to be several trails that meet kind of in that, in that general location, and, you know, it's really going to hopefully serve as a landmark for the park, so, um, check them out on, on their, on their website, it's called the Memorial Park Steel River Station. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Justin, the applications filling out online, is there going to be an opportunity available if somebody does not have computer access or they need help for them to come in here and fill it out online?
Um, yeah, we'll be directing applicants to use the free computers at the library if they need to fill out an application, and of course, if someone needs assistance, we can, we can be available to, to walk them through the process. But there won't be an actual physical computer station set up here for people to apply, but we, that would be available at the library. Thank you.
There was no meeting.
Debbie Penrod from the Library Board of Directors. The Library's starting a new program for additional repair to our 100-year-old drainage pipes, the stormwater management, the runoff and landscaping, and it's going to include rain gardens and all those modern things. As part of our fundraising, I wanted everyone to be aware, if you have not yet seen it, we have a program called Clara's Garden. As most people in the area know, Clara Haas worked for 57 years at the Library until this year, and as part of the honor and celebration of her time, we're going to do part of the little front garden with a, you know, in her honor and call it Clara's Garden. So just wanted everyone to know that. These forms are available almost everywhere and they're online, but in case you haven't seen it yet, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ad hoc zoning, councillor Prescott, no meeting. Animal committee, vice president Miller.
Um, I'd like to say that the pet fair was very successful, a lot of people came out, I saw a lot of people here at the pet fair, thank you very much. Even the mayor stopped by the kitty table, and she's not a cat person. And I was able to find a home for my little three-legged handicapped kitty. Wonderful parent, adopted parents have filled out an application and have been approved.
Okay, thank you. Safety, chief drumhead.
We have Hunter Hayes coming down, Country of Western Concert in the park. I've reached out to ESM Productions, and we've had meetings regarding the additional safety I believe that should be put in place for the concert, based on what recently happened in Las Vegas. We realistically went item by item, step by step, through our security plan and what we plan to do. Obviously, I'm not going to tell you now on camera so that it would be really anti-productive for all that work, but I want you to be assured that we've taken extra steps to be prepared for Pottstown's concert. With that said, today was the International Day of Coffee with Cops. It was at Connections on High, it was very well received. We have also talked to, um, the Halloween Parade, we talked about what we're going to do this year a little bit different. We met with their security, I met with their security firm and told them some of the, some of the issues that we've been having, and we're going to try a little bit, something different this year with barricades and additional help from Omega. So we believe that that will give us a little bit more security sense, that we, we feel the parade's lacking, and it really comes out of candy on the street. So we're afraid that the children are running out in the middle of the street around firetrucks and marching bands and stuff like that, and we're trying to come up with a way to keep that area safer. So we've been working on that, and that's pretty much safety.
Very good, thank you. Before I go to the mayor's report, I think Mr Lenhart would like to talk to us about some more economic development.
Thank you, just going to touch briefly on the upcoming event this weekend, because it should be a hotspot for folks to be aware of, so, in case you haven't heard, Hunter Hayes is coming to Pottstown, they're calling it Citadel Palooza. This is of course put together by Citadel Bank, being run by ESM Productions on their behalf, and ESM Productions has proven that they have the ability to run these type of events. You'd know them from Budweiser Welcome to America Festival, Pioneers of the Wawa, Made in America Festival, or switch those, and the Papal Visit to Philadelphia. So we're really excited about the program they're putting together to make you aware of what's going to be going on in Memorial Park in the next five days. The event is on the 7th, Saturday, 10:07. The doors will open at 1:30, there will be tickets available for purchase at Walk Up, so if you didn't get your tickets yet, you can still do so. The event will run till 9:30 in the evening in Memorial Park. They'll let out at 9:30, and they'll actually do most of the loadout that night, so they'll be working in Memorial Park until about 2:00 in the morning on Sunday morning. They'll finish their loadout on Monday afternoon. Uh, the event's going to include food on site, including a Sly Fox Beer Garden. We're pretty excited about the line of, of musicians, because we have some local musicians that have been chosen to participate, including regional favorite Stephanie Grace and Pottstown's own Kendall Conrad, they'll be opening up beforehand. They've also added some other big names to the docket, and that's Alicia Beal and Carter Winter, both Nashville musicians, and of course Hunter Hayes goes on around 8:00. Tickets are about 1,800 sold at this point, so there are still tickets available, they're for $25. You can get them at citadelbanking.com, and just to remind folks that the ticket sales benefit Children's Hospital Philadelphia in their entirety, that's 100% of ticket sales Citadel is giving to Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Also happy to add on that Manitani Green Mini Golf, our concession has been invited to participate. ESM actually stopped there for lunch during one of their meetings, many meetings leading up to this. We're impressed with what they're doing down there at Mini Golf, and so we will be on-site vending, so we're happy to say that. Primary load-in of the equipment is beginning tomorrow, they've done some marking today, but primary load-in, that's building the stage, is Thursday through Friday. With that, there will be some limited access to areas of the park from Thursday onward. This is mostly safety-related, they're going to be fencing areas in which they're working. Of course, this whole thing is a ticketed event, and therefore there will be exclusive access to Memorial Park on the 7th. So from the whole day on Saturday, Memorial Park, or that section of Memorial Park is closed off, it's a ticketed event, that was a part of the deal, it's part of the rental, and that's what we collected the fees for. So just to remind folks, there will be limited access Thursday and Friday, that's mostly safety-oriented, but then Saturday, you got to have a ticket to come into the park, and they'll be controlling access at the, the primary points there. Um, that is, that's all I got to say about that. I was also asked to touch upon the recent Veterans Community Day we had in Memorial Park, that was the 23rd. Um, that was a rather successful event, we had participation from about a dozen veterans group, Lions Club Rotary Kiwanis. We ran a shuttle to participate between Memorial Park and the Latino Festival in the Riverfront Park that ran 12 to 4, so that we could share some of the action there. Uh, and the good news is that that whole initiative has raised through the Rotary Fund $1,500, and that's towards the World War II memorial. The goal is 2,000, 2,000, and we have a lighting solution for the World War II memorial, so we're well on our way. There's, uh, our partner in the event, Kathy Peretti, who's largely responsible for this event, is actually at an event tonight, asking for a donation. I'm very confident we'll be able to complete that, so we should see the restoration of proper lighting to that memorial. Um, I would say within the year, I think we can do that within the year, as long as weather holds out. Uh, so that's good news. The event as a whole, we were happy with, it was moderately well-attended, we always want to see more folks, but the, the bottom line is that we're pleased with what we were able to do with that event. It included awards given to World War II veterans, we honored four World War II veterans from the area, one posthumously. Um, and that included presentations by Ryan Costello, Representative Quigley, and Representative Hanacy. So those are the two things I'm happy to talk to you about tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now for the mayor's report.
That happened at the Ricketts Center, on the basketball court, there were over 130 attendees, and it was a very good showing of 14, at a minimum, of local churches, congregations that came together for that event, and there were many attendees also from out of state. Also, as councillor Miller has said, I was able to attend the pet fair, and the Latino Festival, and the Veterans Community Day as well, and of course the Carousel of Flavor, which is always a grand occasion. This Monday evening from 5:30 a.m. is the PAL Food Festival, $20 advance tickets, 25 at the door. And also tonight, to declare the evening for children for fun and treats on October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00.
That's it, thank you. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr Waters. I'll let council know that thanks to the efforts of our finance director and our staff for the second year in a row, we received the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Office Association, GFOA. Janice, thank you for your efforts, and congratulations. Our consultants, Huff and Associates, you may recall Huff and Associates handle our recycling grant each year. They recently delivered our 2016 Recycling Performance Grant application to DEP. In 2016, they note that we had recycled 3,378.1 tons of recyclable material, and our grant application amount for the 2016 is at $48,381, which we should recognize as one sometime next year. Also, I'd like council know that the National Park Service, through their PA Historic Preservation Office, has recognized the Borough as one of 45 communities in Pennsylvania known as a CLG or a Certified Local Government, with a stated commitment to historic preservation. They are beginning their initiative to make some changes to their historic preservation documents, and they are reaching out to everyone to express their appreciation for our participation. Let council know that the next scheduled joint Borough Council and School Board meeting, you may recall it was to have been last month, we changed it, and it has been rescheduled for November the 30th at 7:00 p.m., tentatively at the library. Um, and last but not least, this coming Monday, please keep in mind that in honor of Columbus Day or in celebration of Columbus Day, Borough Hall will be closed for business.
Very good. Thank you. Six is zoning, talking about 234 Shoemaker Road.
Sure, this, council should have some information about the zoning appeal. It involves the Wendy's Restaurant in the town center. There are no new improvements being proposed, but rather currently the shopping center is all in one lot. The applicant wishes to basically subdivide and create a new lot specifically for the Wendy's Restaurant, it'll be about one acre. Because of the existing conditions and the creation of the lot, they need some zoning relief. The zoning relief relates to the lack of street frontage, open space requirements, stormwater, drainage as it relates to going off the site. All of those issues will be addressed with appropriate crosseasements for purposes of access and purposes of stormwater. I think the Planning Commission's aware of the project because it originated with a minor subdivision application, and of course when it got reviewed by our consultants, the zoning issues arose, so the applicant realized they needed to go, go to the zoning hearing board and get zoning relief in order to create the lot, and that's where it stands. I believe the hearing was originally scheduled for sometime in the middle part of October, I just saw some correspondence that it's been continued till I believe November 15th. So it's just in front of you for information purposes, council has essentially three options, let the zoning hearing board hear the case and decide, support the request for zoning relief, or oppose the request for zoning relief. If there's any questions, try and answer them, and I guess Dan and Dennis may have a little bit more insight since they've been involved with the planning commission, plan review process.
Any comments, Dennis?
Well, so if we send a letter of support, can it be sent with conditions, because I think in the planning commission, we had discussed, um, the, like the open space requirement, all those things, in light of the tragic, you know, tragic accident on Route 100, if they would be willing to install that fencing along the way, so is, is there a way for us to be able to send a letter with conditions like that?
Absolutely.
And I think that's something we should consider.
Right. And it was that plus putting the sidewalk in from Shoemaker Road instead of from Route 422, or 100. Any other questions? Okay, well, this is for Monday. Thank you. Seven, zoning ordinance amendments for the mural and signs.
I'm not sure there's really anything new to report, we had a public hearing last month as required by the MPC, and I think council had wished to table the matter, and I think there is at least a comment from Deb Penrod concerning the ordinance, at least in her individual capacity, but the matter will be considered again on Tuesday night at the regular meeting.
Can I just add one, one thing to that? We did, we did go ahead and prepare a sample maintenance agreement. The ordinance references what, that a maintenance agreement would be prepared between the Borough, the property owner, and the artists to allow the Borough to access the property, to repair the mural in the event that it would fall into disrepair. So although that document is, is not, is a standalone document, it's not incorporated into the ordinance for obvious reasons, because it could, it could vary greatly or slightly depending on the nature of the project and the different circumstances that are presented to a particular property. But nonetheless, we wanted to provide an example agreement for the basis of what these things might, might look like, since we're referencing it in the ordinance, but we're not asking council to vote on the agreement, just the, just the ordinance that you've already presented to. So that's available on the agenda center for anyone to look at.
Chuck and Justin, I have a question, because I think this is where some confusion came in with the ordinance, and maybe, maybe we can clean up the wording a little bit to, to add this. I don't, I don't think that everybody was under the understanding that there could be a third party. It, it could be a, a third-party group that's willing to take responsibility for the maintenance or whatever, the care of the mural, or painting it over, or putting up funding. It doesn't necessarily have to be the property owner, or necessarily have to be the artist.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, the Borough would still need to, to access the property.
Right.
To make, you know, they would need permission from the property owner to, to get on and make those changes, but, or they would need to also give that permission to the artist, that that would be the third party that responds before maintenance.
Right.
So that could be one, I mean, there's a lot of different, I think it can be pretty flexible, and that's why we don't want to put it into the ordinance, we want to give an example of what it can, what the agreement can look like, but we want it to be flexible enough to be able to adapt to different situations. I mean, the other situation that, that could be is that the artist's group or the property owner could put up an escrow.
Right.
That would, that would cover the cost for any repairs in, in the future. So, there's a lot of different options that, that could help.
Is there any way, Chuck, is, without having to redo everything, that we could put in there examples of, but not limited to, so that they have more examples, because I did read through the ordinance, and the, and the third-party thing really isn't clear in the, in the ordinance?
We, we're permitted to make minor, non-substantive changes to the ordinance, so as long as we're not changing the intent or purpose, and I don't think we are, we can make some minor changes to it, I will agree with everyone that that is permitted. A third party can become the maintenance responsibility for the work, we just need the owner to agree that that can happen.
Right, because it's their property.
Right, the owner's always key to it, but it doesn't mean the owner actually has to perform the maintenance, and so if there was any confusion about that, let's clarify it and make it clear that that's not the case. So as long as there's a responsible entity, that's fine, but the owner needs to be a part of it.
How long they want to take it to do all the rules and regulations? Because my, my mural is already done, and it's at the warehouse for almost two months. Does it have to wait to be everything approved?
In, in, in the instance of the mural in the Borough Garage.
Yes.
We have to wait for council to adopt the ordinance, which, because it got tabled last month, that pushed it back another, another month, but, you know, we have, like I said, we have the example agreement, so it's not going to take long to modify that for this specific situation.
I got it.
But we have, you know, we don't want to go too far, because we want to make sure that ordinance is going to pass.
And I prefer to vote on Monday.
Yeah, I was going to say, the ordinance can be adopted as early as Tuesday, so you're certainly, you're certainly only a few days away if council decides to approve it.
I just want to clear up the third-party part of it, that's fine.
Do you have to re-advertise it, so it's not voted on correctly?
Uh, yeah, I think we're running out of time with respect to the advertisement for adoption. 60 days will not make the next regular council meeting, which would be sometime in November.
So Deb, can we have your input since you're here? Deb Penrod?
I'm on the public speaking, but it's perfect for you to make my comments now.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were at the, no, we were, we were at this.
You mean?
We were on the topic, I thought it was.
Well, I don't think planning has a formal recommendation, I think the only thing we have is a letter from Deb in her individual capacity.
Okay, well, I was going to talk about it, I, I can tell you, I do sit on planning, and I do know that the majority of the members have spoken in favor of this, but it's not a formal statement to council. Okay. So, it's set for Tuesday. Okay, it is Light the Night's Carnival, October 31st, 2017, permission to close portion of Washington Street.
Correct, we have an application from Reverend Brooks at the Victory Christian Life Center to close Washington from Buttonwood to King Street on October the 31st, to have their annual Light the Night Carnival, I believe this is the fourth year, I believe, for this event, might even be more than that. So the request is for the street closure from 3 P.
So the request is for the street closure from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. No comment, we'll list that for Tuesday. Ten is board vacancies. A is code.
Nine.
Code nine, missed that one. Nine, Halloween block party, October 31st, 2017, close portion of Franklin Street.
It's another application we have from Janik Friedline requesting permission to close Wilson, Franklin Street between Wilson and Diamond Street near 806 for the purpose of a Halloween party on October the 31st from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And she has provided us with a diagram and the police department, I believe, has already reviewed this and approved it.
They have?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Reading that, and I'm not against this at all, but reading the application, it seemed like it said for a block party unit, that 75% of the residents signed the petition or something. Maybe I'm misreading or I don't understand.
I believe you're correct, David.
And there was, I think there was one signature on that page. I mean, I'm not trying to hold anybody up, but if there's mural ordinance, we want to follow the rules there, we might as well follow this rule too.
We'll follow up on it between now and Monday, or Tuesday night.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll list that for Tuesday.
Follow up on it.
Signatures, good. Ten, board vacancies. A is codes, Board of Appeals, one alternate. Any applications?
No.
None. B, Human Relations Commission, there are two vacant terms to expire, 1-9-19, or 2021, and 5-8, 2021.
I believe the, I believe the Human Relations Commission has one suggestion as far as the candidate. Marsha?
My name is Hannah Gonzalez. I believe the information was presented today at our September meeting.
We just, we just received a fax as we were walking into this meeting.
Okay. The commissioners, after September meeting, unanimously approved her to recommend to council to fill the vacancy of the payoffs. Okay? And then right before our last meeting, we had another commissioner resign, so we've got to wait till the announcement that we have another vacancy and then wait 30 days to fill that. So we do have, you know, the individuals that didn't qualify, they're in the loop, you know, to be considered.
Okay.
So the recommendation for one of the positions on Monday, or Tuesday evening?
Okay.
And then the commission will make a recommendation regarding the next position at their next meeting.
Very good.
Mark, while we're still on Human Relations Commission, I want to, I just want to touch on some notes that had come through the Human Relations Commission, the payoffs and the criminal background check. So I want to make it clear that these are very important because you're working with a very vulnerable population. However, I think there's some misunderstanding about what would disqualify you. So simply coming back with some minor history is not going to disqualify you from serving on the commission. There's certain standards that would do that.
You're correct.
Could you talk about those a little bit?
So the standards are set forth under the state law for the Act for Protecting Children and the violations that we would consider as exclusionary from being on the commission would be those that would prohibit the commissioner from interacting with children as spelled out by state law. Child abuse, correct.
There, well, there's two different ones, right? So the, right, the criminal background check. So the FBI picks up the child abuse, correct?
Correct.
And then the state picks up something else that deals with children.
So at the end of the day, both, hypothetically, both records would reflect the same violations. They don't always do that because if a candidate has lived in other states, the FBI check would pick up that information, whereas Pennsylvania is only going to pick up the Pennsylvania information. In theory, on the FBI check, the Pennsylvania information should also be there. So the example that you had posed to me was what if a person had a simple retail theft, a summary violation, would that exclude them from the commission? No, no. If the person had a sexual assault, absolutely would exclude them. Okay?
Okay. Eleven. It has been made known that our borough manager, Mark Flanders, will be retiring as of December 24th, 2017. And it is for council to replace the borough manager. I've taken some time in the last week to meet with outside people and advisors on what it is we are allowed to do. At this time, we're going to have, we as a council have to decide whether we will promote from within or go into an outside search. With an outside search, it's going to take time and money. One lesson I learned is that this could be a three or four month process once it starts. I will assemble what I have learned and put it into an email to each of you and we can discuss this further at that time. Okay, twelve.
Before we go on, because I, because I, I do have a recommendation for that and I'd like to add it now for the borough manager.
Do you have a third alternative?
Well, one, yeah, I do actually, because I think that, I think that we need to, I think that we need to employ a professional company. I said this last, last meeting. A third party to conduct an objective critical analysis of the borough organization, structure, operations, employment, and salaries. And before we have that recommendation, I wouldn't suggest even replacing the borough manager until you have those recommendations and then I would, then I would employ a head hunter or perform a nationwide search to get as many applicants, qualified applicants as possible for a borough manager replacement.
Okay. Well, I will be sending out what I have. Hard. We have documents for A, 1200 High Street, B, 429 King Street. Have the opportunity to see these. Thirteen is administratively approved for hard. A is 80 North Charlotte Street, B, 262 King Street, C, 1236 East High Street, D, 29 North Hanover Street, E, 1120 East High Street, and F is 425 King Street. That's the list and we'll add them for Tuesday. Okay, fourteen, comments from citizens present. Okay, and we allow you a three minute window.
Start the clock. You have my comments in front of you. Don't worry, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I missed the September meetings and missed the opportunity to comment on the mural ordinance and I have not yet watched the PCTV show, but I will. I apologize if this is nearly moot, but I did want to get my comments on the record. Understanding that I am not speaking on behalf of any of my positions on the Planning Commission, the Blighted Housing Library Board Directors, or the Historical Society, or the Committee for the Rotary Pavilion at Riverside Park. I'm just coming from a crazy sense of service and volunteerism and improving Pottstown. As a borough property owner and resident, I have informal comments and I'm not talking about the sign ordinance because I haven't really actually looked at that, but I do know that that's a separate issue. Regarding murals and most every other public activity, project, or event, I'm in favor of accountability by the, and responsibility by the individual or entity who initiates any such thing like that. One of the most common complaints we hear here in Pottstown is that the people of Pottstown don't take enough responsibility or don't exercise enough authority over what's wrong, especially regarding property. It's my understanding that the ordinance reduces costs and bureaucracy for a mural, but rather than grant free rein or free range or uncontrolled activity, at the same time the ordinance is also now adding a level of responsibility and accountability that may not now currently exist. And I applaud this and would like to see more of this. I use a simple example of graffiti or similar vandalism to a mural and I use this example only because I think it's easier to understand. I'm not like into structural stuff. Vandalism such as hate symbols or obscenities. If a property owner says, I won't take care of it, and the initiators take no responsibility, then it's up to the borough using your tax, I mean my tax dollars to fix it. I am aware personally of one situation where a mural was, a surface prepared for a mural had to be painted or covered up by somebody, not the property owner or the, or the original initiator for the mural. And similar burdens have fallen uninvited on other de facto caretakers for public arrays or displays that were then abandoned. And I have examples in the comments I gave you for my opinion that if the property owners don't want to be responsible or accountable, that's okay. That does not necessarily prevent the artist from finding a third party and it sounds like you're going to make that much more clear so that it doesn't have to be, you know, a legal function to figure out how to do that. I'm using the same example, graffiti. If all three options are a no-go or a failure, no owner, no artist, and no third party sponsor, then I think there's maybe a red flag that there might be a problem and I would oppose any such project. I don't see this as a deterrent to improving Pottstown. I see it as an example of stepping up and ensuring we have responsibility and accountability in this borough. I understand that we have a couple of projects that have brought this ordinance kind of to the forefront. I had hoped this evening to have been able to have suggested a possible solution to one group who might not have been thrilled with the ordinance by way of a third party proposal, but they're not, we didn't have a chance, so that's it.
Thank you. Next.
Sheila Dugan.
I just wanted to get on to PCTV and talk about next weekend, October 14th. We have a lot of things going on downtown. The Hauntson High, where we have about 30 businesses who will have safe trick-or-treating. We have face painting, we have a selfie booth, we have different things going on with that. That starts at 12 and goes on until 4:00 PM. The Arts Walk also starts in the morning at 11 and goes till 7:00 PM. It also includes various places, starting at the Beach Street Lofts, different venues throughout the community that are a part of that. There'll be Bike Share, both at the Miniature Golf and at the Hill School for that. Miniature Golf is having some scarecrow making during the Hauntson High. Badminton, the Badminton Place at 310 East High Street is having their Badminton Rumble. So please come out and enjoy and see what's going on. We have some new art popping up in Pottstown in the downtown as well, getting rid of the old art. So please join us.
Thank you.
Lisa Mueller.
Hi. I've spoken to you all before in support of the new mural ordinance and I just wanted to mention again that I agree that the language in the ordinance could be cleared up a little bit to strengthen the third party option for the homeowner agreement. I'm not against the homeowner being ultimately responsible for the mural, but a third party is an option that many cities and towns use and I'm hoping that Pottstown can form a public art commission or an advisory board made up of artists from the community and other interested members of the community, because there are many issues that will come up with a mural that could be handled by such a commission. The maintenance is really only one of them. There are, there may be issues with adjacent properties. There are special issues with temporary installations, installations that have a timeline and a beginning and an end that are really separate from permanent murals. I also think that a commission could field questions from the community. There'll be a fundraising responsibility, I feel, that the commission could take on to help with the maintenance. I also believe that we should, let's see. I guess that's it actually. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we will be retiring later for an executive session, but for now, councilors, general discussion. Counselor Kirkland. Counselor Paez. Counselor Arms.
I heard a lot about responsibility and accountability the whole time we've talked about it. And this applies to all of us sitting up, myself included. Where was the responsibility and accountability for that lot prior to all this happening? The lot's been a disgrace for how many years? I've lived here 30 years and it's looked like that for as long as I can remember. So we're all gung ho about this accountability and responsibility for this mural, but the pro, and so the mural's not going to happen. We're going to continue to let that property deteriorate. That's what's going to happen. So it's, here's my thing, if the property was beautiful and it's kept up all these years, we're going to have this mural ordinance and we're going to hammer everyone and say, you sign this, you sign this, so you're responsible. It's a different story. That's all I have.
Okay. Counselor Pruswell.
I have a sneaking suspicion that the borough has been on top of that property for quite some time. It's, I believe that's probably one of the reasons why the property owner is reluctant to get an agreement with the borough to enter the property.
My neighbor's lived across from that property for, I'm almost 57 years old, she's lived there for 57 years. Property's been a nightmare ever since. The borough's not doing anything as usual.
Anyway, I had a good time at the Veterans Community Day and as long as, and the carousel flavor is especially a little warm, but it was a good afternoon, I think. And then on the 13th, I'll be girtled by the third graders of Rupert Elementary when they ask me questions about what it's like to be up here.
Very good. Counselor Cole.
I attended the pet fair, which seemed to be quite a good success this year. I would like to see more rescue there. I understand things to have those at the same time, so that kind of hurt a little bit. I also went to the Latin Festival and that was, his eyes looked wonderful. And there was a vendor there that is opening a Mexican restaurant down by where the subway is. I believe the subway is still there. And he had a huge piece of pork on his spit and he cut pork off of there and made me a taco and it was wonderful. And that seemed to be attended, I guess during the day, there was, people came and went. And I also went to the veterans' affair that they had over at the park and that was nice. They had music, there were a lot of people there, there were a lot of places to go and talk to different veterans, different veterans, businesses and things that you could get information. And I'd like to see, I'd really like to see more marketing, more advertising. I think we really, really need that because there's so much that goes on Pottstown that people do not know about. So there's got to be some way that we have to get that out there, but it was very, very, very nice.
I was there, but I'll tell you about it later. Counselor.
I have a couple of things. I also was at Veterans Day. I was also at the Latin Festival and of course I worked at that fair, so there was a lot going on that weekend and it was so much wonderful stuff. It's really hard to even attend everything, so I'm hoping that more people in the community realize how many good things we have going on here and that they come out to enjoy them. Dennis, I just want to touch a little bit on your, I understand your concern. I think painting, we got to stop looking at this as an individual project and what the effect it has borough-wide. So you're not looking at one piece of art, but you're looking at the, you got to look at everything that's happening throughout the borough. And, you know, painting one sign and then letting that, if that sign does deteriorate or if it does get vandalized or if something happens to it, it's not going to serve to improve that piece of property that, as you're saying, is already deteriorated. It's going to make it probably look worse instead of better. Budgeting, we all know, we were at a very large shortfall in the budget, $1.3 million. I've been plugging away, trying to get answers on that and it's come to, most of it is building costs, engineering, and legal fees that came to that shortfall. Now, financial planning, of course, is strategic planning and it's forecasting. Now, financial planning, of course, is strategic planning and it's forecasting, and I don't think that, you know, when the general fund falls short, that our forecast should be raising taxes. I think, I think that we have to be a little more careful about watching trends. Property values have been on decline for several years. Healthcare has been increasing for several, several years, so the analysis of those things have to be, I think they have to do a better job. Some, some employment positions have been added, some, some we absolutely need. I mean, I'm going to caution councilors again to please not cut into emergency services. We can use with the Las Vegas tragedy as an example of what can happen anytime, anywhere, and we absolutely need professional, trained, effective, and calm first responders on the scene, so that's very important. Our police department in 2016 had a 20-year-high of calls, 20-year record high, 24,350. As of September 11th, they were already up to 17,232 calls. They had 53 Narcan saves before September. That's just law enforcement. That doesn't include emergency personnel. And then our fire chief had been backed up on several of those calls as well. And then I just have one last thing that is of personal concern to me. President Wynn has requested that I resign from the Finance Committee. His reasoning was there'd be no repercussions for me following my departure. I disagree. I am a Pottstown graduate. I bought my house here 27 years ago. I live, work, volunteer, play, shop, and eat at the local restaurants. There is absolutely repercussions for me, and this borough affects me, I mean, the budget does affect me. I will be voting on this budget, and I will be continuing to offer input, and I will not resign from the Finance Committee.
Okay. Mayor Thomas?
I just want to report that PAE has launched an economic development branding campaign for Pottstown, and it's called I Pick Pottstown. First event is October 11th at 10:00 a.m. Where about 150 people will be at High in Hannover with I Pick Pottstown t-shirts to kick off the branding campaign. So that sounds also very exciting, not only for the downtown, but for all of Pottstown. And PAE is coordinating the effort with Virtual Farm Creative. That's been hired to help execute this campaign. President Wynn, if I may, regarding the opening for the borough manager position, you offer a commentary, and that commentary comes, of course, on the heels of what you're saying, Councilor Miller, but being sensitive to the need for budgetary constraints and fiscal responsibility, I believe that it's really to our advantage to, you know, exploit the possibilities of the preparedness of our assistant borough manager and use this 90-day transition period as a portion of training, and to have that type of transition with an absence of a full assistant borough manager with some, you know, creative spreading around of duties that the assistant borough manager has, possibly, to other entities. That could be a way to cross-train and to close a little bit more of the impasse in the budget.
All right. Well, I had nothing to add. I was at many of the celebrations. I will admit to having a taco at the Latin, at Rita's affair at the Latin Gathering. I went for ice cream over at the veterans', and, you know, we have so much going on in this town that's good, it's hard to get to everything. Since you raised the issue, Councilor Miller, yes, I've heard and talked with a lot of constituents. The issue is, should someone remain on the Finance Committee who will not be here to either reap the benefits or suffer the slings and arrows of what we do in the budget? And after listening to a lot and discussing with a lot of people, it was my thought to put, replace someone and add someone to the Finance Committee that would be here to weather the storm in 2018. Good. I think we are going to an executive session for personnel.
Tuesday, we have a positional use hearing, provided by the House of Representatives. The residents, were they notified in that general area, and how were they notified?
Yes, Mr. Arms. So ordinance requires that individuals, I believe, within 300 feet of the property receive notice by first-class mail. It's also been advertised in the newspaper, and the property's been posted with notice of the hearing, so I would expect a relatively large turnout, given the fact that residents have come out for the planning issues associated with that property.
I'm going to add one more thing. And Mr. Wynn, I've also talked to many of my constituents about that, and none have that same feeling that you do, but since you feel so strongly about it, I'm hoping that you're going to give your commitment to the voters, that if you lose the election in November, you will immediately yourself be stepping down from the Finance Committee as it will no longer affect you.
That sounds right. Okay, media adjourned.